Please take your seats. The show will begin momentarily. Please rise for the presentation of the colors by the Blue Mountain ROTC Battalion, and remain standing for the singing of the National Anthem by Gettysburg College student Samantha Maroney. And now, please give a warm welcome to Gettysburg College's very own President Janet Riggs.
Please be seated. Good morning, everyone, and a very warm welcome to Gettysburg College. We are so pleased and honored to host this forum for the Congressional Medal of Honor Society here on our campus. Gettysburg College has as its mission the preparation of students to be active leaders in a changing world. At Gettysburg College, we don't equate leadership with being in a leadership position. Rather, leadership is about taking effective action in service of the greater good for the betterment of others. And every member of the Medal of Honor Society has certainly exemplified this kind of leadership in a significant way, taking effective action in service of others. Three thousand four hundred sixty-two individuals have been awarded the Medal of Honor since the medal was first given in 1861. Those recipients come from all walks of life. Among them are scholars, construction workers, entrepreneurs, and clergy. They live all over the country, and they represent a diversity of racial and ethnic backgrounds. But what they have in common is that they have each demonstrated extraordinary acts of military heroism. They all share a commitment to the United States of America, and they carry the distinct honor of wearing our nation's highest award for military valor. It seems quite appropriate that the annual Medal of Honor Society convention is being held here in Gettysburg in 2013, the year that we commemorate the 150th anniversaries of the Battle of Gettysburg and the Gettysburg Address. First introduced in a Senate bill in 1861 by Iowa Senator James Grimes, the Congressional Medal of Honor was originally designed to promote the efficiency of the Navy. After Congress passed the measure on December 21st of that year, President Lincoln signed the bill into law, and the Navy Medal of Honor was created. Two months later, another bill was passed providing for Medal of Honor eligibility to those serving in the Army. And when the Air Force was created in 1950, those members were eligible as well. Personnel of the Marine Corps and the Coast Guard are eligible to receive the Navy Medal. In 1958, President Dwight Eisenhower, who called Gettysburg home in his later years, signed legislation which chartered the Congressional Medal of Honor Society to create a bond of comradeship among all living recipients of the Medal of Honor, and to maintain the memory and respect for those who had died receiving the Medal of Honor, as well as those living recipients who had since died. There are currently eighty living Medal of Honor recipients. And of course, we are very, very fortunate to have three of them with us today. One Medal of Honor winner who made the ultimate sacrifice is Gettysburg College's own Stephen Holden Doane. Stephen was a first lieutenant in the United States Army during the Vietnam War, and in 1969, he performed an act of heroism that led to his receiving this honor. To read Lieutenant Doane's citation, it's my pleasure to introduce Tom McCracken, class of 1966, a former Navy fighter pilot with over four hundred combat missions. One of his distinguished flying cross missions is depicted in a print, Black Pony Scramble, which now hangs at the Wyndham Hotel here in Gettysburg. Now, following Tom's request, I am not really going to introduce him by name. Instead, I'm going to use the call sign of one of his squadron mates who did not return from Vietnam. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in welcoming Black Pony Zero Four to the podium.
Stephen Doane entered Gettysburg College in the fall of 1967 as a freshman. He would leave school later that year to join the Army to serve his country in Vietnam. Now, some of you might find difficulty understanding that decision. However, many of us here understand completely. Would you please rise for the reading of Lieutenant Stephen Doane's Medal of Honor citation? "For conspicuous gallantry and intrepidity in action at the risk of his life above and beyond the call of duty, First Lieutenant Doane was serving as a platoon leader when his company engaged in a tactical operation, abruptly contacted an enemy force concealed in protected bunkers and trenches. Three of the leading soldiers were pinned down by enemy crossfire, one seriously wounded. After efforts of one platoon to rescue these men had failed, it became obvious that only a small group could successfully move close enough to destroy the enemy position and rescue or relieve the trapped soldiers. First Lieutenant Doane, although fully aware of the danger of such an action, crawled to the nearest enemy bunker and silenced it. He was wounded, but continued to advance to a second enemy bunker. As he prepared to throw a grenade, he was again wounded. Undawned, he deliberately pulled the pin on a grenade and lunged with it into the enemy bunker, destroying this final obstacle. First Lieutenant Doane's supreme act enabled his company to rescue the trapped men without further casualties. The extraordinary courage and selflessness displayed by this officer were an inspiration to his men and in the highest traditions of the United States Army." Please be seated.
It is an honor to have Stephen Doane among our alumni. Thank you, Tom. It's now my pleasure to welcome Chris Wallace as moderator for today's forum. As most of you know, Mr. Wallace is currently the anchor of Fox News Sunday. Before joining Fox News, Mr. Wallace worked at ABC News for fourteen years, where he served as a senior correspondent for Primetime Thursday and as a substitute host for Nightline. Prior to joining ABC News, Mr. Wallace was with NBC News, where he served as the chief White House correspondent from 1982 to 1989. He also anchored Meet the Press and the Sunday edition of NBC Nightly News. His work has won him every major broadcast news award for reporting, including three Emmy Awards, the Dupont Columbia Silver Baton, the Peabody Award, the Saul Tishoff Award for Broadcast Journalism, and most recently, the 2013 Paul White Award for Lifetime Achievement and Service to Electronic Journalism. Please join me in welcoming Chris Wallace to Gettysburg College.
What a treat we all have in store for us today. As you just heard the citation of the Gettysburg College alum, it takes your breath away to imagine someone being that brave, that selfless, that patriotic. And we're going to hear more stories about that today. And think of it, since 1861, fewer than thirty-five hundred Americans have been given the nation's highest military award. Only eighty of them are still alive, and you're about to spend an hour with three of them. We're very lucky. Harvey Barnum Jr. was a Marine first lieutenant serving in Vietnam in 1965. His company was suddenly pinned down by a hail of enemy fire and separated from the rest of the battalion by over five hundred meters of open and fire-swept ground. Lieutenant Barnum quickly performed a dangerous reconnaissance of the area, seeking targets for his artillery. Finding his rifle company commander mortally wounded and the radio operator killed, he gave aid to his dying commander with complete disregard for his own safety, then took the radio from the dead operator and strapped it onto himself. He assumed command of the rifle company and moved into the midst of heavy enemy fire, rallying all units, reorganizing them to replace the loss of key personnel, and leading their attack on enemy positions. He stood exposed repeatedly to point out targets. Provided with two armed helicopters, Lieutenant Barnum moved fearlessly through enemy fire to lead the air attack against enemy positions, while skillfully directing one platoon in a successful counterattack. After clearing a small area, he directed the landing of two transport helicopters for the evacuation of the dead and wounded. He then assisted in the final seizure of the battalion's objective. Barnum was presented with his medal in 1967 at the Marine barracks in Washington rather than the White House because of the politics of the day. He was the first man to receive the Medal of Honor for service in Vietnam who then returned to action there. Barnum retired from the Marines in 1989. He later served as Deputy Assistant Secretary of the Navy and Acting Assistant Secretary of the Navy. Please help me and join me in welcoming Harvey Barnum Jr. Salvatore Junta has always loved and sought out adventure. As a kindergartner, he packed a suitcase, removed a window from his ground-level bedroom, crawled through it, and set out to explore the world. But since he was five years old, he made it as far as his neighbor's house before deciding to return home. This sense of adventure likely influenced his decision to attend the U.S. Army Airborne School and to become a paratrooper. Besides a love for adventure, Junta also displayed a strong love for and urge to protect his family. On 9/11, his first instinct was to pick up his siblings from school and bring his family together. That day, his sister said, "If the world falls apart, I guess I can count on you." She must have known. On October 25th, 2007, Staff Sergeant Junta was serving as a rifle team leader during combat operations in the Korangal Valley in eastern Afghanistan, an area so dangerous to American troops, it was known as the Valley of Death. His squad of eight soldiers was ambushed during a nighttime patrol. Junta took a bullet to the chest, but his life was saved by the protective body armor he was wearing. Still under fire, he proceeded to recover two fellow soldiers who were wounded in the attack. He then saw two Taliban fighters dragging away the body of another soldier who was one of his closest friends. Sal threw grenades at the insurgents and fired all his rounds, forcing them to drop the soldier to the ground. While still under fire, he provided care to the soldier until medical help arrived. Staff Sergeant Junta was the first living recipient of the Medal of Honor for service in either Iraq or Afghanistan. The previous seven awards had been bestowed posthumously. And he was the first living service member to be awarded the medal since Vietnam. He retired from active duty in 2012. Please welcome Sal Junta. Former Army Staff Sergeant Clinton Romashay was awarded the Medal of Honor on February 11th of this year. He's the new kid. For courageously defending a remote American outpost in eastern Afghanistan from a ferocious attack from more than three hundred Taliban fighters. The 2009 ambush was one of the deadliest battles for U.S. forces in the entire Afghanistan war. Combat outpost Keating was manned by only fifty-three soldiers when it came under attack. Romashay began directing his fellow soldiers as two of his comrades were killed by Taliban snipers. The enemy breached the base defenses and were just yards away from the surviving American forces when Romashay killed three of them with a leftover Russian sniper rifle. Repeatedly exposing himself to enemy fire, he led a team of soldiers to secure the outpost's ammunition storage and establish a stronghold to repel the attack. President Obama said Romashay showed, quote, "conspicuous gallantry" in taking out an enemy machine gun position, calling in airstrikes that killed thirty Taliban, laying down covering fire to allow three of his fellow soldiers to return to safety, and scrambling through a hail of enemy fire to recover the bodies of fallen Americans. He was wounded in the neck, shoulder, and arms by shrapnel. After a rocket-propelled grenade hit a generator, he dismissed his wounds as nothing more than a few scratches. The firefight lasted more than twelve hours, and eight American service members were killed. But the bravery displayed that day prevented combat outpost Keating from being overrun by the Taliban. Please welcome Clint Romashay. So here's the deal. I'm going to have the great good fortune of talking with these three heroes for about forty minutes, and then we will open it up to questions from all of you. I want to start by going back to the moment that I just described in each of your cases. When your unit came under heavy fire, when you risked your own life to rescue your fellow soldiers and to complete your mission. I think we all wonder what we would do if we were in such extraordinary circumstances. So please take us back to your moment, and let me begin, Barney, with you. What was going through your head? How, why did you decide to take charge in that moment instead of doing what I suspect a lot of us would have done, which was to take shelter?
Well, Chris, we were just winding down an operation coming out of Quayson Mountains, and we were in a column of companies. I was with a reserve company, Hotel 29, that came in to support Second Battalion, Seventh Marines in Operation Harvest Moon. And three companies had gone into this village, Kifu, and one exited. Hotel 29, with which I was a forward observer with, was a security element. We were the last ones out. And as we were coming, just before we crossed the rice paddies to go into Kifu, I heard some rifle rounds up the front, and then all hell broke loose. The enemy, well dug in, well camouflaged, well disciplined, let three companies go by before they sprung the ambush. The initial rounds, they picked out Captain Gormley, my company commander, walked him with a .45 on his hip, with a map in his hand, and that whip antenna, the TRC-25 behind him. The initial rounds hit him, mortally wounded him. Well, the first time I'd ever been shot at. I'd been in Vietnam nine days. First patrol I'd ever been on, first time I'd ever been shot at. So I hit the deck. And when I looked up from underneath my helmet, all these young Marines were looking at me. They didn't know my name, I'd just joined a unit, but I had a bar in my column. And then you could see them, "Okay, Lieutenant, what do we do now?" So the first thing I did is contact artillery, call in fire, and started adjusting it on the enemy that had us pinned down. And then I saw Doc West, corpsman from Chicago, running by me saying, "Skipper's down." And I looked out about from here at the end of this hall, and I saw four or five people laying on the ground. One of them was Captain Gormley, the radio operator. He got shot three or four times going out. Then my scout sergeant ran out, protect him. He got shot three or four times, Bessie McLean from Florida. And I kept adjusting fire, and then I realized, that's the company commander out there. You know, the quarterback of the team, and the radio operator. So I ran out, picked up Captain Gormley, brought him back. We talked a little, he died in my arms. Then I went out and got the radio, came back, put it on, called my battalion commander, and told him what was going on. I'd never met him, he didn't know my name. And I told him I'd taken control, and he says, "Make sure that people, you know, know you're in charge." So I started leading, telling people what to do. And, you know, a lot of people say, "Well, how did you know? You're an artilleryman, you own a Marine Corps. Every lieutenant is trained as a platoon commander, infantry platoon commander first, and then you go specialize." So I had had that training just three years prior to that. And then I knew what the training that the young Marines had had. So I called the plays, and they executed. We took on ten-to-one odds. We were successful.
Sal, in a sense, the same question. And I really want to focus on what goes on in your head at that moment. And, you know, as I say, I think most of us would think we would cower in the corner. Why did you take charge instead of taking shelter?
For me and my incident, we were in a near ambush. The line was only maybe thirty meters away from me to the middle of the room. We all had machine guns shooting five hundred to a thousand rounds per minute, and it's hard to miss that many times at that close a range. I did what I did because everyone else was doing the same thing. I was on that hill with eighteen other guys, seventeen other guys that night. And there's no room or time to think about you because you don't matter. We matter, and it has nothing to do with you as an individual. And I never once led. I always stood side by side to my brothers. That night, it caught us off-guard to be attacked with such intensity. I listened to these stories of the other recipients, and my fight only lasted maybe three minutes. You can't sustain that amount of aggression that close. And my first thought was to my boys, Clary and Casey. I had a three-man team with me, but we were there on a fifteen-month deployment. So fifteen months got us, you know, two weeks back home, and one of the guys was on his two weeks back home in the fifteen months. And I looked at Casey, and Casey was standing there with an M249 saw, a machine gun, shoots about a thousand rounds per minute. And he just stood there and just laid waste. He didn't take cover, he didn't do anything, just started shooting back. And in a near ambush, sometimes the best cover is just behind your own bullets. And he did that for us. I can't tell Casey what to do if he's already doing the right thing. He took that upon himself. I looked at Clary, and Clary was laying down on the ground. He was firing two O3s, about a grenade launcher, shoots a grenade about the size of my fist, forty millimeter. And he's doing that, so I don't have anyone to lead. I don't have anyone to tell what to do because we're proficient at our soldiering skills. And I look forward to my leader to see what he wanted me to do. And when I looked forward, I saw Galardo take one to the head when he dropped. And I thought it was, I mean, that's really it. But at that close a range, I just didn't want to see him get shot anymore. It just kind of hurts your feelings. And I ran forward to grab him and drag him back. And I was dragging him back, he started coming to, and he started moving. And the round hit the helmet, and it, I mean, I'm sure it feels like getting hit in the head with a baseball bat, but he wasn't shot in the head. And all he said was grenades. And we all know what to do. This was, I'd already spent maybe a year and a half in combat in Afghanistan. I'd been in the Army for, at this point, five years. We knew what needed to be done, and we had more things to do than we had people to do them. So it's about just getting things done, checking those boxes, and moving forward. And the next box to check would be finding the guys. And when I moved forward, we came up to Eckro. Necro was shot twice in the leg and twice in the chest, and he was down on the ground. And Galardo immediately went to Eckro. And because of the sort of team that we were, I knew Galardo can take care of it, so I don't need to do anything. Galardo took care of Eckro, there's no reason for me to stop. I'm already running forward, I just keep on running forward. I ran forward to Brennan, and I was hitting my leg, and I was out for ten days in 2005. Brennan was shot in his leg, and he was out for two days. And so I can never live that down. I can't be any tougher than I was because it's already in the past. So the last thing, ultimately, the answer to doing a near ambush is to charge the ambush line. That's going to be the end result. You shoot, then they shoot, you last man stands on the winning team. And I couldn't find Brennan. And I figured that he did what he needed to do, which is charge the ambush line. So I went to follow Brennan. I did not go to search for Brennan, I went to fight next to him. I don't want him to hold this against me. And when I came up, it was a different scenario than I ever expected. I didn't expect them to take our wounded and dying. And they were taking him away, they were running on the other side of the ambush line. And so I did what I had to do, I closed with them, destroyed the enemies of the United States. In my mind, the thing that sticks out in my mind that night is that that was just another day of work. We've been at this war now almost thirteen years, and that was no special day. That was just October 25th, 2007, a day in Afghanistan, a day in combat. And we stayed in Afghanistan, and we didn't leave until July 29th, 2008. So we were there almost another nine months. That's nothing special, it's your job. Through my mind was, I don't want to let my boys down because they're not going to let me down. I think that was probably the strongest thing. Serve with the best. I got to perform at that level to be one of the boys, and that was what I was trying to do.
Clint? Clint, same question. What was going through your mind in that moment?
You know, getting woke up at six o'clock in the morning by a hail of bullets and indirect fire is kind of a crappy way to wake up sometimes.
You know it's going to be a bad day.
Yeah. No, we'd been up at outpost Keating for almost three months at that point, and it'd been a lot of back and forth with... a lot of back and forth with, are we going to keep it open, are we going to close it down? And the team of guys I had there that day, my platoon, you know, we would sit there night after night, talking with some of my NCOs, Sergeant Kirk, Sergeant Diego, Sergeant Hart, about if we're going to attack this place, how would we do it? And October third, 2009, at six o'clock in the morning, they hit, just like we talked about, how we would do it. When first rounds came in, you know, we'd been getting harassing fire pretty much every day for the first three months. But you could just tell, there was something in the air. And I remember waking up, getting my kit on, I was the acting platoon sergeant, my platoon sergeant at the time was on R and R leave back in the States. My platoon leader was our acting on-the-scene commander. Our troop commander had just swapped out, and Army loves their paperwork, they were doing a sensitive items update, correcting some paperwork that had kind of slipped through. So he wasn't there that day. So my platoon leader, myself, we'd get the reports coming in from the positions, and it is three hundred and sixty degrees, every position is overwhelmed. They hit our mortars right off the bat, knowing that if they could suppress our mortars or indirect fires, we would, outside the gun lines, gun lines for the 155s had a Bob Boston. Suppressed them and took Thompson out right off the bat, one of our mortar men. Right away, we already knew we had KIAs. Started getting a situation report from our perimeter security, Sergeant Diego's, Sergeant Larson, and they went into a cyclic rate of fire with their machine guns. As fast as they could fire, they were trying to return fire to the enemy. The problem was, our ammo supply point and the ability to run ammo out to them was an exposed hundred-meter dash. And the enemy knew that. And with them having the high ground, it very quickly came into a concern that the trucks couldn't sustain the fire. There was too many targets, there was just too much going on. And at first, I'm sitting there and I'm thinking to myself, "Well, you know, I got to get a head count on the acting platoon sergeant, let's figure out where our guys are." And just try and step back and put yourself in a position, because you want to get in there, you want to be with your boys, you want to be on the front lines. But to be able to step back and kind of look at the overall picture, and starting to paint it for our platoon leader who's trying to coordinate the close air support, you know, was crucial. It got to the point, though, that within the first hour, the call had came across the radio, "Enemy in the wire." And you hear that, and it's like, there's no way. This is, no. Well, at that point, we were starting to pile up casualties, running low on ammo. Remember, running into the barracks and asking for volunteers. Went in there, you know, we'd been taking this at this point for hours now, just taking it, just sitting there, just huddled up, just taking it. Got angry, got mad. F this, we're taking this bitch back. We're going to go on the offensive. They ain't going to expect it. Coordinated with the lieutenant, asked for five volunteers, Raz Jones, Danley Delaney, and Sergeant Miller. Said, "We'll follow you." I thought to myself, "I wouldn't follow me, that's stupid." Hashed out the plan, and that's what we did, we counter-attacked. We pushed back, and we got to the ammo supply point, started feeding ammo back to the guys. And I'd heard Sal's story before, read it in Stars and Stripes, about the Taliban taking the dead. At that point, we had lost contact with about four soldiers for about six hours. Had no idea where they were. No, nothing, no clue. We'd finally gotten a call from that position on the east side, where my team leader Sergeant Larson is. And Ty Carter, who just received his, this August, said, "Hey, we're still alive. Mesa's still alive, but we have no idea where Guy Utes and Martin R..." Were able to set covering fire for them and those boys. Larson and Carter brought Mesa back. We started finally painting the picture to where our heroes were laying down at. And it was no one at that point, but it was a team effort. It was, we got to do our jobs. That's what we finally got paid to do. Because really, in the military, when you're back stateside, we're kind of wasting your tax dollars because we're just training to do our, training to do our jobs. We don't do it until we go overseas. But that teamwork, that camaraderie, that we're not going to leave someone laying there, we're never going to leave a soldier behind. They wouldn't do it for me, and I'm not going to do it for them. So we went out, we got them. And at the time, as you're doing it, it's, like Sal said, it's, you're just doing your job. Your boys are expecting you to do it, you depend on them like they depend on you. And what was great was to know that we had fifty-two Americans there going against three hundred Taliban fighters. And these guys were good. These guys were bounding overwatch on us, support by fires. Good, well-trained enemy force, but not nearly as good as the American soldiers and the guys we had that day. It was three hundred against fifty-two.
I want to pick up on something because there was one common theme, as I read about all of you. I don't think that either of you, any of you, would have any problem talking about the other two on this stage as heroes. And yet, you completely resist it when it comes to talking about you. Sal, you have called yourself mediocre and just a middleman, representing all those who served and sacrificed in Iraq and Afghanistan. Why this reluctance to accept the term hero?
I don't, I'm not trying to fool anyone, I'm trying to tell the truth, and that's how I see it. But ultimately, I've read stories about heroes. I've read about Barney when I was going through basic training. I've heard these stories, and it's of men that are larger than life, people that are willing to give up everything for someone else that they might have just met. But not that. I was absolutely mediocre that day, and I will promise you all of that. And I am average amongst the men that I served with. That's how good they are. They're still doing it. I'm a civilian now, I shave half my face, I goof off, I only have to answer to my wife. They are still doing it. And there's, the men and women here in the audience today, wearing the uniform, they're doing it. I'm no hero, I'm just hanging out, telling stories, sitting in a comfy chair. They're the ones putting in the work time. It's easy to see that, that's just how I believe that, I still believe that.
So Barney, Sal just accused you of being a hero. How do you plead?
We know the youth of today are... No, I think we all, I hope that I was an example, that I led, and the only thing that I feared at the time was making the wrong decision. Never feared for my life because I relied on my training, or relied on those young Marines and phenomenal corpsmen that I had to lead. So I figured I was doing my job. And as I said, the greatest reward that I had is watching them do what I asked them to do and be successful. And it was all about the Marine on your right and on your left. And I think that's the, you know, what drives, what drives you in combat. And you know, talk about heroes, I want to make one comment. I saw a video this morning made of Will Swenson. Will Swenson is going to receive the Medal of Honor on the fifteenth of October. And it showed him laying out there on the field with a colored marker on his, so that the medevac helicopters could find him. And wearing that, he was a target. But the pilot and the medic in the plane had a video camera on their helmets. And they released that today. And the most, the thing that got to me is when Will Swenson, Captain Swenson, carried and drugged Westbrook, and put him into the helicopter. And the medic is looking right down on him, this far away. Captain Swenson kissed Westbrook on the forehead and patted him on the head. Warrior to warrior, we were successful, you're hurt, I got you to... That's what teamwork's all about. That video is the most powerful thing. It will explain to anybody that's never had to experience this, what it's all about, to fight next to your brother, a Marine's a soldier.
Clint, I want you to answer the hero question, and I also want to bring up something that then-Secretary of Defense Gates said to Sal when he received his award. He said, about him, but he could have said it about any of you, "You are a reminder to America, there are heroes, modern heroes, who live and walk among us." So how do you deal with this question of whether you consider yourself a hero? And, in a funny way, don't we need it more than you? Don't we need to have heroes that we can look up to?
Well, you have, I mean, being the new kid on the street, I guess, to this great fraternity. You know, you look up to these guys and you hear their stories, and you just never think, never in a million years did I ever think I'd meet a recipient, let alone be one up on the stage here today. But what you notice, though, is the quality that's in everyone. You know, that just grit, that American sense of who we are. We're the ones that, when the chips are stacked against us, we dig deep, you know, we man up, and we take that challenge on full front. And you see that, as you look around the crowd, that's in everyone's setting here. You've already got it in you, it's right there. It's just when it's your time, when you're faced with that opportunity, that adversity staring you down, what are you going to do? Are you going to sit there and let it pass you by? Or are you going to stand up and do that check, and do what we as Americans do every day?
Clint talked about being the new kid on the street. It's a pretty great street for you. And let me ask you all about that wonderful medal, and any American who knows what it means, just looks at somebody who has that medal around their neck and is just filled with awe and respect. How did receiving the Congressional Medal of Honor, and let me start with you Barney, and we'll work our way down, the nation's highest honor for military valor? And as a kid, I remember, the Congressional Medal of Honor, I mean, that was the gold standard for being an American, being a great person. How has that, what does it mean to you? How has it changed your life? How often do you think about the fact that I have received this honor from my nation?
Well, I've worn this now for forty-eight years, and in honor of those great Marines and phenomenal corpsmen, as a lieutenant, I got to lead. And together, we came together as a team. And I always remember that. And you know, often, when I've had to make a decision, I've taken out the medal and sort of held it and said, "What would Smith, Smokatelli, and Jones say today about the decision I'm about to make?" And a couple of times, I have said to myself, "They wouldn't like it." Well, I didn't make that decision that day for that reason. So it gives me strength, it gives me strength, and I hope that, you know, today, wearing this medal, I go to a lot of schools and talk to the youth of our country. And I believe that the future of our country lies in the hands of our youth, the future leaders. I always feel, if because I had this medal on, some whippersnapper will listen to what I have to say and follow my direction, what a successful day. So I've never used it to my own benefit. I wear it with pride because of the young men that it stands for. But my friends, this is the Medal of America. This is a symbol of who we are, what we are, and what we will do to protect the freedoms we have. I'm just a custodian of this.
Before I, before I bring in Clint and Sal, and, you know, I don't even remember where I heard it, but I remember in the fifties, growing up as a kid, the Congressional Medal of Honor was it. It was up on the pedestal. Do kids today, you say you talk to kids, do they understand what the Congressional Medal of Honor is and what it means?
Boy, some do and most don't. You know, it's hard to, it's hard to say. I have people, adults come up, not just kids, adults come up, "Oh, isn't that pretty? What's that?" You know? And that's when you have to take a deep breath. And put this in your pocket. I think, and that's the reason we also have, for kids to learn about this, we have a character development program that the Medal of Honor Foundation, the society, is behind. And we have a curriculum that we have out in schools, and it talks about patriotism, courage, honor, integrity. And if this can be a mechanism by which they'll understand how great a country they live in, then we're very proud of wearing it. So we never, we never come to an event that we don't get around children. The other forty-one recipients that are here today are out in schools, all around Gettysburg, talking to young children. And the same message is there. Love of country, patriotism, freedom isn't free, there is no free lunch out there, be who you're going to be, do what you're supposed to do, don't do what you're not supposed to do. So that's being preached. This is the mechanism that gets their attention.
Sal, same question that I asked Barney to begin with. What does the medal mean to you? How has it changed your life? How often do you think about the great honor that this country has given you?
When I'm wearing it, I don't think about it because I don't see it. But when I put it on, I'm touching it, and my actions, Doc Mendoza died within the first couple of seconds. Brennan died once I got him back from the enemy. And they are two men of twenty-six of my buddies that I left in Afghanistan, that died in Afghanistan, we never left anyone, that I think about because they have absolutely given everything for this country. And I haven't done anything but hang out and collect a paycheck. And it means a lot to me because it represents what they do. They don't have the rest of their lives to live, their life is over that day. But I get to go forward with it. And like Barney said, that was very well said, it's almost like standing on a podium when I put it on. But I won't talk about this. Sal Junta's story's played out, it's old news, it doesn't really matter, it's not that good a story. But what it can represent, and all those that it represents, is exactly what matters the most. And I don't wear it for anyone other than my buddies. And I wear it because it's my platform, it's my microphone, it's my soapbox that I can get on and talk about how wonderful this country is, how many opportunities we have. What we have here are rights, and we get so many privileges on top of that. The majority of the world does not receive what we receive, and we take it for granted because it's come to us at birth. We need to remember what that cost. And it doesn't cost us in this room, it costs all the men and women who have died on the battlefields around this world. They have paid that for us. I think about that. When I received the medal, my life changed because I've been talking my whole life, very rarely were people listening. And now, now I get to talk and everyone listens. It's, it is a microphone. It has been, it has been very, I don't know how to say, it has been an awesome responsibility. It has never been any trouble to me, but it is something that I, I bring my A-game when I put this medal on because I know what this medal means. And I have to act my best to know, to represent those that are no longer here to do what they were going to do. And so I think through all this, meeting the gentlemen on both my sides, I think about exactly what Barney said, you know, would they like this? It's strange to think about, oh, my brother, my other brother, this is, I don't want to let anyone down, and I certainly don't want to let anyone down that has given everything for me. And I hope not to. And it's an awesome responsibility.
I think you two summed it up right there. I mean, you know, when I put this on, you know, I'm just the caretaker of it. You know, my daughter says, "Hey, glad you're wearing a necklace again today." But to know that, that's all I'm doing, I'm just carrying her around for those that can't, those that no longer here, for those great heroes that gave that ultimate sacrifice in defense of our life, liberty, and our pursuit of happiness. That do it every day without question, because they do it...
without question, because they do it because that's what we do. You know, I'm quite the opposite of Sal. You would have met me six months ago, I don't talk at all. And I learned that from my granddad, who was huge in my life. My granddad, you know, growing up, told me, he's like, "Look, don't say a whole lot, because when you finally do, people will listen." And then Grandma told him to shut up. But, you know, it's great to have this opportunity to share the experience, you know? It's a heavy burden, at times, putting this on and reflecting back to what it costs. But to be able to disperse the load, share the story, share the memories of the guys, get the message out of great soldiers that are doing great things, and just share a little bit to lighten it, you just can't replace that.
We have a few minutes left before we open it up to all of you, and I'm gonna try to get you all in trouble now, in the remaining moments. Talk a little bit about current events, what you think about. From the President on down, you've seen in the last couple of weeks, there's a lot of talk now, from politicians, about how war-weary the country is after Iraq and Afghanistan. And you saw this kind of reflex reaction, not just from the politicians, but obviously reflecting the American people. We don't want to be involved in any more wars. Starting with you Barney, is that okay, or does that worry you at all?
Well, it does worry me, because when we make a decision to go do something, we ought to go do it, get on with it, use all the military might, get the job done, and come home. I think, personally, I think we could have wrapped things up a little faster if we had some more troops to do the job, and then be very careful of the political restraints. How many Vietnam vets are here? Folks, look around at those Vietnam veterans. I want to tell you all this. I want to tell you something. We went to Vietnam, did what the National Command Authority directed us to do, but at times, it was like fighting. Joe Louis, Cassius Clay, with one arm behind your back. We might have got our nose bloodied a few times, we never lost a battle. The battle was lost on Capitol Hill by the gutless politicians who wouldn't come up with a strategy, stick with it, and let us use our military might. And I think that pertains to the latest conflicts. We could have done more with what we have, but for political reasons, we weren't. So, and I worry, and of course, the Syria thing is another story. But just remember, if you ever had a wasp come at you, if you hit it and killed it, you're all right. But if you swatted with it and you just ticked them, you sure made them mad and they came back with vengeance. So, my only recommendation is, if we're gonna do anything, we should do it the right way, the right reason, the right amount of troops, get it done, and not piecemeal. Piecemeal draws things out. So, if it's a military mission, Chris, we ought to let the military people come up with the courses of action, once approved, let them execute it, and we'd be a lot more successful, in my opinion.
Sal, you're up. When you hear all this talk about how war-weary we are, and the kind of reflex opposition to any kind of military involvement, does that, does that make sense to you? Does that worry you? What are your thoughts about the mood in the, because this isn't just the politicians, this is the mood in the country as well?
One thing that we have, I believe, today that is very special, is we have an all-volunteer military. Everyone who is in the military raised their hand, they said that's what they wanted to do, they made that decision, that commitment, for X amount of years or X amount of time. That's what we have today. Less than 1% of this country serves in the military. I think we need to let, just what Barney said, if it's a military action we want, the military needs to figure that out. Once we, the politicians are gonna yak about whatever they're gonna talk about. I didn't have a TV for seven years because I just don't want to hear it. And my life was better for it, because I was able to live it and not listen to their shenanigans that they're talking about. And I think, whatever the decision is, the people who are gonna do the action should be the ones making the decision. The people who are gonna just talk about it, they should talk about something else, because they don't understand.
I enjoyed this session until the point that Sal said that he doesn't own a television set.
I saw the look in your eyes.
Talk about enemy fire, wow. Clint, do you own a TV set? If only to watch sports?
Actually, no, I don't either, because I got tired of, kinda got tired of coming home and having to cancel all my wife's DVR shows, so I could finally watch some Duck Dynasty. There you go. But, you know, it's, you never want to have to go to war. That's something you want to avoid, that's why we have democracy, we got diplomacy. But when it comes time to doing it, get it done, get it done right. You know, our fighting force is, that's what they are, they're a fighting force, they're not peacekeeping operations, they're not law-rent-a-cops loaned to another country. Let us do what we do best, that's what we train to do. That's why we are the greatest fighting force, the most professional armies, because we got the finest men and women to choose from to start with. But then we got the great support from the communities, from our citizens, and backing that army. So, let's let them do what they do best.
You know, one other point is, and so many parents who have lost their sons have said to me, "We're proud of what he went to do, he loved what he was doing, get it done in his honor, don't leave until it's done." I think we owe it to all those young men who have given their lives, and we owe it to their families, their moms and dads, to do it, do it right, and come out with honor. And I think we owe it to ourselves, and to them.
Let me pick up, we've talked about the political component of this, and you guys have all made yourselves pretty clear about that. Talk about it from the military point of view. When you look at the military today, what are your thoughts? What do you take pride in? And if anything, what do you worry about?
Well, I worry about, here we have three or four wars going on, we don't know what's gonna happen in Syria, and we're coming down in numbers. So, we're gonna ask less troops, the operational tempo has slowed down, it's gotten bigger. And we don't know what is gonna happen with terrorism, okay? You know, we're up against an enemy that's decided they're gonna take us down. They got a 100-year plan, and they're gonna, they're working at it. So, here we are, we got problems back in Iraq, Egypt is going to hell in a handbasket, Syria, Afghanistan, narcotics war, terrorism, and to meet the budget, we're cutting the military. I think, I think that's crazy, I really do. And I'm saying it as a grateful American, knowing what our military has accomplished, you know, when they get the call, when that red phone goes in the, from the White House to the Pentagon, and they pick it up, and the Chairman finds out that statesmanship and diplomacy doesn't work, the President says, "Fire up Plan 50," whatever it is, we go execute it, and our numbers are coming down. Yeah, there's some areas to be trimmed, but I tell you, we're being gutted, I gotta tell you. When you park airplanes, and pilots don't fly, and the balloon goes up, those pilots gotta be recertified. Planes gotta be flown, maintenance-wise, if they don't work. I tell you right now, I don't think we have a strategy. I don't think we have a strategy. Shame on us. We're better than that, but...
Couple of minutes left, so I'm gonna ask you, you should take a minute, your thoughts about the current state of the military. What you take pride in, what you worry about, Sal?
I'm gonna talk about pride. What I take pride in is, when I look out, and even today, we have 18-year-olds raising their hand, committing four years, six years, to service. It has nothing, they don't, they're not doing it for $30,000 a year, they're doing it for a country of people who aren't gonna do it. And what motivates me is, when I think about what stirs up in me of anger, I think about 9/11, being attacked on our turf, and to see an 18-year-old, they were only seven years old in 9/11, they don't remember it, maybe they see it on TV or YouTube, or they don't remember it, they don't fully grasp that, and yet, they still raise their hand, and it's not about going to war and fighting the enemy, it's about defending what we have now and how great it is, because this is very precious, what we have. And it can be lost as easy as, things can get better, but they can also get worse. And the individuals that are signing up today are signing up for service. And I believe that is the start down a great path of becoming better. That's, I have great pride in the military today. I look at the crowd, the gentlemen over here, the folks over here, I love it. To see the Vietnam veterans, it always, it always gets me, they never sit in a group, and they don't all look the same, they're spread out, but it's about the service of all the people amongst us, which is, we are the greatest country in the world, and that's proof of it right there, just in this audience. I get to look out on you guys, and I see hope, and inspiration, and pride, because I see a lot of great people, and I see a lot of opportunity, a lot of possibilities. And if there's someone I want to defend in my freedom, it's right here, you don't have to look far. I can see tons of them, from left, all the way to the right, and here in the middle. I think that's pretty special. You know, I'm proud of the men and women that serve today. The gusto, the grit, just, they shoulder it upon themselves when few others have. You know, less than 1% is serving in our days, our military today, less than 1% of the American population. And it's all voluntary, they do it because that's what we do. You know, I get a little distraught, though, that as we're moving forward, you know, I can pull out my Constitution, and I can read in there, where it says, "We'll raise and support armies." The month I got out of the military was the same month they helped pay from American soldiers for half a month because of the budget cuts, because we couldn't get our stuff together, sorry, because of the bickering and the fighting. You know, that's not what we are as Americans, we come together, we make a plan, but most importantly, we follow the parameters that were laid out in front of us in this great experiment called democracy. We've got a guiding light there, let's follow that. Take care of our troops, take care of our guys, because they've already sacrificed so much.
You're here. So, now it's your turn. We have a couple of microphones here. Anybody who wants to ask a question of these three extraordinary men, please come up to the mic and ask it. Let's, you've got about 20 minutes, so try to keep the questions relatively short, and let's get the answers short, and we'll cover as much ground as we can. Sir?
First of all, thank you very much. Each one of you are an inspiration to everyone here. I'm sitting here in awe, and I guess what I'd like to know from each one of you is, what's on your bucket list?
Well, Barney? You're my age, so you...
I think on my bucket list is, spend more time with grandkids. But my next trip, I want to take, I want to make that Alaska cruise, that's on my bucket. The last thing was on my bucket list was to visit Israel, and I got to do that last year. And, you know, for someone who was with Central Command, with Egypt, Sudan, the Horn of Africa, and Lebanon, all Arab countries, and then to go to Israel and hear their side of existence, and then see the pride, the spirit, and then also speak to the Palestinians, that was probably the greatest trip I've ever had in my life, and that was on my bucket list, not anymore.
Well, to these, to use the expression Barney did, whippersnappers, maybe I need to explain what a bucket list is, but we old guys get it, but in any case, I suspect you know. Sal, I mean, you gotta have a long bucket list, like 50 years' worth.
It is, I do have a long bucket list. I think one of the coolest things that I want to do is go to space. I think, I want to go down deep in the ocean, I want to explore this world. We have so many awesome things, and you'll never know what you truly like until you've seen it all, and I've never met anyone who's seen it all, but the more you see, the more you know, and outer space seems pretty sweet. I don't want to live there, I just want to visit, real quick visit.
We'll introduce you to Richard Branson, there you go. Clint?
You know, I'd like to be able to touch the rim of a basketball hoop someday. Maybe I can get a trampoline or something, but I like to keep, you know, simple, simple and achievable stuff.
When, when, my wife Lorraine is in the front row here, sometimes says, you know, "I'd like such-and-such," my response is always, "I'd like to be six feet tall," but, well, we can get you a ladder, so there you go. Okay, sir.
Chris, what's on your bucket list?
Actually, my boys and, it's not, I...
I'm embarrassed to be in the same group with these guys, I don't measure up, but some of the things on my two boys and I, every couple of years, we...
Went to the Masters, and last weekend, we went to Lambeau Field, so that's my bucket list.
Hi, thanks for showing up, sharing your time and your stories with us. Never ceases to amaze me how the people who I think should not be humble are the most humble people I've ever met or ever seen, and you guys are amazing, I just want to let you know that. A couple days ago, President Putin of Russia mentioned how he didn't think that we were exceptional, and that was a problem for him. The stories I hear, and I'm always, it's always the same story, the man to the left, the man to the right, that's why I do what I do. Why is it that you think that the American military is superior to any other nation's military? How is that instilled into folks like yourself to put your buddies ahead of yourselves?
Because we got so many people asking questions, I'm not gonna let everybody answer every question. Barney, why don't you take that one?
Well, I think we're the best trained, the best led, and the best equipped, and we live in the greatest country in the world. Now, we're gonna put all that together to make sure we keep it the greatest country in the world. Thank you.
And let me just say, because I'm not a great strategic thinker, there are twin people here, and there are two people there, so you're more likely to get your question asked if you go over to that side, ma'am.
Hi.
They're running over, this is good.
Thank you so much for your service, and thank you for being here and sharing your stories with us today. I'm interested to know about your feelings about reinstituting a draft. We've talked about the 1% who stepped up and who has served this nation, but we're putting all of our military responsibility on such a small group of people, and yet, we're all benefiting by the sacrifices. So, I'd be interested to know what you think about a draft.
I have to say, as they were talking about the 1%, I didn't realize it was just 1%. I was struck by exactly the same thing, because it feels like we have subcontracted our patriotism, our service, to a group of people, and for a lot of us, we will not know, not see, not have a member of our family who serves in the military, and that comes at a certain cost. Sal, your answer to that?
This audience is a perfect example of that. Service comes in many forms, you can have service through support. This audience is full, the chairs are full, this is the support, this is the service. I don't, I never was part of the draft, I was too young for that, but I like the fact that we have the ability to volunteer, because that makes it that much more special. And to know that it's $30,000 a year to leave home for a year, that's not that good a pay, but people do it, but that's what makes it special, that's what makes it a true service, to be of the people and for the people, and it has nothing to do with the monetary value attached to it, it has everything to do with how you feel in your heart, and I believe that instills a commitment. One thing that we have as Americans is, we don't fight because we hate what's in front of us, we fight because we love what's behind us, and that is America. That is something very special, and when you actually feel that, and it takes over, I'll volunteer again. I would like to do something awesome. I want service, I believe in it.
Sir?
First of all, thank you guys so much for coming to our school, we really appreciate you guys being here and what you've done for our country. My question is, given recent technological advances in warfare, such as unmanned drones and other robotics, do you eventually see technology taking the place of humans in combat? Or, if not, if we are replaced, what do you think that's going to do to the ideas of heroism and gallantry in warfare?
Clint?
You can never replace the soldier, hands down. The only way to hold terrain is with the infantry, boots on the ground. You can bring all...
You can bring all the planes in the world you want, you can call all the artillery in the world, you're not gonna hold that piece of property unless you have a human there doing it. I fear that we are getting a little too lax on allowing our technology to think it's gonna solve all of our problems. We still need to make sure that as soldiers, as just regular people, I mean, shoot, let's throw our cell phones away for a week and see how we, we end up. You know, we still gotta have those skills, we still gotta train those soldiers to be able to read a map without a GPS. Because when the batteries go dead, sorry lieutenant, find your way around. So you, you'll never replace the, the fighting soldier. You just can't do it.
Ma'am?
I just wanted to make two quick comments. I wanted to thank you all for choosing Gettysburg. We're very honored you'd be here. And the common theme I found you all talk about, your heroism as just doing your job. And I just wanted to say, I hope and pray that you realize it's so much more than that. And thank you.
Yes?
Hi, my name is Laura, I'm a senior at the college. And all three of you touched on earlier, using, being able to use your metal as a way to educate people, especially younger people. I'm wondering what you think about, just in general, how we could do that maybe as a government or as a country as a whole, how we could get that word out there? Because I actually had an experience, I was talking to one of my residents in the dorm about how I was going to this forum. And they asked, it was, it was because I won the Medal of Honor. So I said, "Do you know what the Medal of Honor is?" And they didn't. So I'm wondering if you, if you have any other ideas of how you can educate people better?
Barney?
Well, first of all, we, you know, I mentioned this character development program that we have developed with the Erie School System. And it's, we've all given our living histories. And then educators have looked at our living histories and see what they can pull out and use in their classes. It's not, we're gonna have a class on Tuesday at three o'clock on patriotism. Throughout their classes, they weave patriotism using our living histories as an example. That's one way. But the other way is, and I guess they don't teach history in, in schools anymore, you gotta get back to teaching history. You know, what people have gone before us in two hundred and thirty-eight years, what they have done and learned from what they have done and be thankful for what they've done. So a lot of people got taken on themselves too. Once they find out they're not knowledgeable in something, they should do some research. And with the internet today, you can Google any recipient and come up or go to homeofheroes.com and there's all this on there. So there are many ways, but I guess it boils down to priorities. People got other priorities. It's I, 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 me, me, me. And maybe ought to look at their country as a whole rather than about themselves.
Sir?
I came three thousand miles to be here. In the last couple of days, I have had probably one of the nicest days of my life yesterday, shaking the heads of probably thirty-seven or thirty-eight gentlemen, including the three of you in, in front of me now. I have spent the last thirteen years researching the Canadians who have gone off to war with the United States and earned a Medal of Honor. My number is at well over a hundred right now. And I just have a comment, number one, first of all, congratulations and thank you for your service, the three of you and the rest of the service people that are in the room. My comment is that I'm, I'm a little chagrined and I probably need a flap jacket to get out of this room when I say this. But I've spoken to Americans many times over the last decade and, and many Americans, and include Canadians, don't understand the role that Canada has played in, in US military history. Today, there are thousands of Canadians wearing your uniform, when, when, when the media, you're gonna shoot me, Chris. Talk about the Americans who won the Medal of Honor. In your service today, there are Canadians that just give a shiver right up their back because they think, oh, I'm as big a hero as this guy beside me. Or they could be. And, and so I would ask that the Medal of Honor Society and those in the room understand that, number one, Civil War days, fifty thousand Canadians fought, there were eighty countries in the world, I believe, here, maybe not that many in Gettysburg. There's twenty-seven Canadians buried today. I took pictures of graves yesterday from the Little Round Top. So I would, I would just ask the people in the room to understand that, that there were many nations in the world that, the Irish people, the background, a hundred and fifty or more Medal of Honor winners. So I would just ask that when people talk about the Medal of Honor, don't just use the word American, although I salute all Americans for what you've done.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you.
We've got less than ten minutes and I want to try to get people... Yes, go.
Um, hello, my name is Michelle and I'm from DBTV. And I just wanted to say first that we just want to tell you that kids really do understand about the Medal of Honor and we want to say thank you to keeping us safe. And now, my question is, when you were in the battlefield, were you afraid? And if so, how did you overcome this fear to save people's lives?
All right, Sal? We, we kinda covered that, but Sal, briefly?
I was afraid. It was, you're gonna get shot, everyone's gonna get shot and you don't know how bad it's gonna be, but I was afraid, but it has nothing to do with you. They're not gonna give up on you, you're not gonna give up on them and we're not gonna retreat, so we gotta go forward. And it has to happen and there's no one else here, less than one percent of the country serves and there's no one else on this mountainside in Afghanistan with us, so if you don't do it, then who? And if not now, then when? And I think once you start putting that into the perspective of it has to happen or I have to do everything to try to make it happen, it makes it pretty simple. Always forward, never backwards.
Thank you, you are true here.
Thank you.
Yes?
First of all, I'd like you, thank, thank you so much for your service, all of you, as well as the recipients of the Medal of Honor who aren't here with us today. I just have a comment to make about how us, me being a young adult and as well as many in this room, we do look up to you and we do thank you for your service and it really truly does inspire us to do that kind of stuff when we're older. And I just have a question that, what do you think with all the technology and the, especially in our generation, we're all caught up in the new technology, the internet, all that attention that we're giving to that kind of stuff and we're not actually giving time to think about the values and the true meaning? We barely have time to think about our families and friends and we just are so caught up in all this stuff. And the things that we need to know, which was present that, like, when you guys served and when you were out there and you were giving your time for our country, do you think you still have hope for the future and what we can offer to our country as well?
I mean, there's, that's what makes us such a great nation. It's that, that hope, that, that constant evolution of ideas that, that we all share a part of. You know, life, liberty, pursuit of happiness. You got that freedom, you got that choice, you can make that individual decision to progress and go forward. You, you don't find that anywhere else. Technology i- is great, it keeps us connected, but we still need to have those personal interactions. You still need to have that, that family unit together that understands and cares and builds that community, that, that builds that country. And it all starts when the individual knowing that there's more than just themselves.
Thank you.
Sir?
I would just like to thank you, what you've done for the past, for the country of the United States. And I was wondering what your favorite or most memorable moment you've had in your year of service was?
Anybody want to take that one?
Well, I spent, you know, thirty years as an officer Marines and I, a lot of memorable things, but I, you know, I was a battalion commander at Paris Island and I had the opportunity to train recruits. I had fifty graduations in two years and over, over twelve thousand transformed unorganized, fat, unmotivated, undisciplined civilians into being low-crawling, hard-charging United States Marines. And to see them on graduation day and to see the expression on their parents' face is absolutely phenomenal. And to be able to do that and to be able to influence them as they let off and, and fire them up, I think that's probably, other than being in combat and leading, I think that was probably, probably the most inspirational job that I had.
Great answer. Yes?
My name's Hannah Love and I would like to know, how did you stay so brave?
How do you stay so brave? Well, actually, we, we should ask Clint that since he was in the twelve-hour firefight. And that is a question I have because in, in, in your two cases, and in fact, you even mentioned Sal, the adrenaline's rushing, you're in this fight for your life, you almost don't have time to think. In twelve hours, you got a lot of time to think.
I mean, you, you rely on your training. You go back to, to that muscle memory. You've drilled, you've practiced, you, you became proficient. You go back to knowing that your battle buddies, your left and right, are doing their job. So you gotta do yours, you gotta hold in there. And it's scary, but that's, you know, what, what courage is, is being scared shit.
Okay. Let's see if we can squeeze all the, nobody else get up, so we can just squeeze the people who are standing up in. Sir?
First off, I would just like to say thank you for your service and my question is, is what is one lesson that you learned throughout your life that you would like to pass on to the newer, younger generations in order for them to become better people in their future?
Sal?
It is never over until you quit trying. You have to personally stop trying and make a commitment not to do that anymore before you can call it a failure. We all have opportunities and the opportunities are endless as long as we continue to pursue them. And the world is at your fingertips and all the opportunities are there. You have to put in the sweat equity to get what you want. Sometimes an opportunity is sky, is disguised as hard work. Don't be afraid of the hard work, find that opportunity in there. I think that's it, that's life. Where I get to live it every day, you get to live it every day, every day is a gift. It is not a right. Take advantage of it. Open, open your eyes with surprise and excitement and willingness to go and adventure because it might be your last chance.
Thank you.
Sir, over there.
Being one of the, the many stewards of this battlefield, they come in all shapes and sizes, I, I have to ask, do any of you share a personal connection with the men who fought here in eighteen sixty-three, particularly the sixty-three Medal of Honor recipients for their actions here in July of that year?
He looks at me.
Yeah Barney, that third day of the battle was pretty tough, wasn't it?
Well, on Ju-, July third, eighteen sixty-three, on Cemetery Ridge, I was an artilleryman. And it was something to see twelve thousand Rebs come across that field. And I also liked when Chris said earlier Barney and I are the same age, you know? Thanks, Chris, I appreciate it.
I was gonna say, I was over in the side reporting on what was going on. I said, "Pickett's making a big mistake."
You know, the one thing I did notice, there wasn't much camouflage and concealment on that battlefield. And it was man against man and, and you know, that battle on the third of July, I think the history of this great country changed. We could've ended up with two different countries. And so it was very meaningful and I think that made us think. And looking at that diorama last night, I know, we all commented on it. You know, war is horrifying and not glorifying. That diorama depicts how horrifying war is. And then it was countrymen against countrymen in the Civil War. Let's pray to God we never see that again.
We, we are officially over our time, but I'm gonna do a, an audible here, the three gentlemen, but real quick.
I honestly believe there is no higher award in the world than a Congressional Medal of Honor. I was down at the wall in Wa-, in Washington DC at that Vietnam Wall and I saw a Congressional Medal of Honor laying at the base of that wall. Fortunately, you know, nobody was worried to even touch that medal. My question is, are you familiar with the person that left that Congressional Medal of Honor there? I believe it's in the archives right now of that museum. My question was, I just wondered if you knew who left that medal there?
It was, it was recently, sir?
During the twenty-fifth anniversary of that wall. When Westmoreland, well, I forget what year that was, but it was the twenty-fifth anniversary of that wall, because I saw it there.
If we were doing my show, I'd have my researcher working on it and we'd have an answer, but we'll find out.
I hate to admit it, but you know, there were some, some counterfeit medals around for a number of years and that may have been it, but I don't, that's the first I'd ever heard of it and I live in Washington.
I'd never forget that to rest of my life.
Well, I...
Sir?
Chris, I'm Jerry Dumont and this is my second convention. I attended the Medal of Honor Society Convention in Boston in two thousand and one, where I mentioned Mike Wallace, a great journalist. And I've had the privilege of knowing these gentlemen for a long time, especially Colonel Barnum and Sal and so forth. But one thing that, that sticks out in my mind, I've heard a lot of people say about Medal of Honor recipients that they, they win it. These gentlemen have earned the Medal of Honor. They're recipients of the Medal of Honor. They earned it, they didn't win it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
And finally? Personally, I just want to thank you guys for the incredible legacy you leave me and my peers, the goal to live up to your reputations, to surpass them. It's, it's incredible. And I want to thank you for bringing the sword and the shield that protects my freedoms and my, my family. That's incredible. I was wondering, what, what do you have to say to soldiers who struggle with their morality of what they do?
Go ahead. You know, it's, you know, it, it is a volunteer army and, and there's so many different facets of what you can do in the service. You don't have to be a frontline troop. You can get that experience, that education, that advancement for life and still service the country and to, and to America. Morality and what we do, that's what we do. That's the reality of it. You can't go around and, and not bloody a few noses to protect what we shed so much blood to get in the first place. It's just the nature of the beast. But, I mean, you don't have to be the frontline troop. There's, there's always other things that, to service for, for the community, for the military, for, for our country.
Barney, you wanted to say something?
Anybody, there's no one that despises war and killing any more than the three of us, okay? But sometimes you have to do what you gotta do to protect your country, freedom, what it all stands for. You know, this country's taken a long time to build what we are. That's the reason we have a military. We train, we train, when we get through training, we train some more in case we have to go take on those who want to take us down. None of us want to do it. But sometimes, you know, your life, the welfare of your family is sure worth fighting for. And, and you know, we don't go off and want to, and volunteer to die for our country. We want to go out and make the other guy die for his country.
Another good way? You know, I always looked at it, Chris, is I was never taking a life, I was saving one of them in battle. Simple as that.
I hate, I hate to have to wrap this up because I've got a bunch more questions for these gentlemen and I'm sure all of you do as well. And I love frankly just hearing them talk. I had the privilege of covering Ronald Reagan for six years in the White House and I was thinking last night, as I was thinking about this event, that he used to ask, "Where do we find such men?" And his answer was, "We find them where we always found them, when we need them. We find them where we found you, on the main streets and the farms of America. You are the product of the fairest, the most generous and the most humane society that has ever been created by man." To all of you in the audience today, thank you for taking the time to be part of this special event. A big thanks to the wonderful staff and the supportive students at Gettysburg College and to everyone who's helped make this event possible, we want to thank you. But most of all, to Barney and to Sal and to Clint, we thank you, we thank you for your service, we thank you for your courage. Having heard you for the last hour, we thank you for your wisdom. Our nation would not be what it is today without your bravery, your patriotism and your service beyond the call of duty. So I want everybody to join me. We thank you.